Good evening. I call to order the public hearing 702. The purpose of the public hearing is for citizens' comments on the ordinance bill 2013-06, ordinance 801.
Mayor, if I may, in light of litigation that's been filed on this particular annexation issue, I respectfully request the board to defer that indefinitely and will bring that back at the appropriate time when the litigation has been concluded.
Motion to defer.
Are there motion on the floor?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing closed. Call your attention to the Board of Commissioners meeting April 4th, 2013, 7:03 PM. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and the pledge.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day that you created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you would guide these men and women as they undertake the city's business, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
With the approval.
We have a motion. Second. I'd like to make a change on item 7D and add the S as plural to recommendations. There are three.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to respectfully request that the board defer item 7A under old business, the second reading of the resounding of the proposed annexed area, defer indefinitely until the litigation is concluded.
Any other changes, additions, or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved with changes. Next item, citizens' comments. There are no citizens' comments. Item number four is awards and recognition.
Mayor, there are no staff awards or recognitions in season.
Any from the board? Item number five is public announcements.
Mayor, just want to remind everyone of the emissions testing every Tuesday from 7:30 to midnight at Highway 96, violation.
I'd like to also make a public announcement. It was shared with me by our Fairview ambassador to keep Williamson beautiful that on Saturday the 6th, at the library, there will be maple seedlings given away, open to the public. And that is a, I want to say Middle Tennessee Electric, and I apologize, but it's not in the email, but it is a gift being given and the library is handing that out. She did say it was Saturday, but I don't have a time, you can call the library for time. Didn't say that if there's any trees left over, that they will be offering them to Bowie Park staff for any needs of replanting as we discuss our forestry plan. That is from Ms. Millicent Kitter. Any other public announcements?
Mayor, I have one. I would like to announce we are hosting the Special Olympics here in Fairview. The middle schools hosting it, but I think a lot of the events will actually be held on the shared football field. But I believe it's at 10 o'clock?
9:00?
Well, that's volunteers, I was thinking. But anyway.
What time's it for? Is it 10?
Yeah, I believe it's 10. So, but either way, it is exciting, I think, to have it here in Fairview. So, anyway, I'm sure there's still would like volunteers. If you'd like to contact and volunteer your time, please contact Stephanie Hughes at the Fairview Middle School.
Any other public announcements? Special Olympics.
There is going to be a convention from that. There's going to be a mud bike over at the Lions Club ballpark this Saturday. Sign up at 2:00. It starts at 4:00. There's a small fee to get into it and all these funds are generated, they're generated or gone to test many elementary schools for their eyesight. And I think last year there was close to 300 tests done. So, get out, participate, and support.
Excellent. Thank you. Item number six is the approval of the minutes. We have 6A, the minutes for the February 21st, 2013 public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
With the approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6B is minutes for the February 21st, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting.
With the approval. Second.
I have two things I would like to address. First, on Ms. Leah Emerson, Ms. Teresa, her name is spelled L-E-A-H-E-M-E-R-S-O-N, for clarification. And I would like to also request that the tape be reviewed for 7D, 7E, and 8D.
I didn't have the tape on this one.
Say again.
I don't have the tape for this one. This was strictly done by, my notes here.
Can you make notes of what I'm requesting be clarified and corrected? Okay, it would be 7D?
E.
7E?
And 8D.
Sorry, I circled it. And 8D. Quite a bit of discussion on several of those topics, so if you can have those reviewed and make any corrections as needed. Any other changes or deletions on those records?
The changes she's going to make, how's she going to know what she's changing?
I'd like to amend the motion that this be deferred until we're able to review and accurate the minutes.
I think that's what we'll have to do. I don't think we can just approve the minutes until she's going to make changes. We don't know what they are.
Then that be deferred until they're represented, corrected.
That's a motion.
Admittance of the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Because it begins at first, we don't have to go back. C is minutes of the March 7th, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting.
With the approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item D, minutes for the March 11th, 2013 Board of Commissioners special meeting.
With the approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6E, minutes for the March 14th, 2013 Board of Commissioners special meeting.
With the approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, 7A has been deferred. 7B, discuss and/or take action on bill 2013-09.
Ordinance number 804 is an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview Conceded Usable Code, Chapter 3, Section 4, Occupational Safety and Health Program and Program, Device Rules and Regulations, provided by Board Director, and implementation of such program as follows.
With the approval. Second.
Any discussion?
This will not be amended position, is that correct?
That is correct. All it is, is just clarifying the title. We have someone's name in there before and now we're just putting a title.
And this says a requirement for motion.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, discuss and/or take action on City of Fairview projects. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to update you a little bit. There is a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss the work to be done on the trenching and the electrical underground on the Boo Lake road widening. We anticipate that work getting started on Monday, weather permitting, and we do anticipate good weather, so that will be, they hope to, it started this last Monday, but we had some weather this week, so, and cool temps, and they didn't want to open the asphalt factory. So, they're getting to the point where they're ready to go now. More updates on that one. The other was the Roadscapes project. We have gotten, Don can speak more to this, but we've gotten the approval on our NEPA documents on environmentals to proceed. Is that correct, Don?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're ready to proceed to the next step on that, which is, what's the next step, Don?
The design and preliminary engineering phase.
Which we've got, we've started the process of selecting an engineering group to do that. Triangle School, we have gotten some information, feedback from the Tennessee Historical Commission. Dr. Rice had sent a, or had discussed some information that we had talked about with the Claudette Stager or Stager, Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer, about installing a central heating and air conditioning system. She said it should not jeopardize the building's listing in the register. Also installing a restroom and kitchenette in the back classroom should not jeopardize the building's listing in the register. Window replacement, I spoke with Lewis Jackson about this. Windows are a character defining feature of a school and should be repaired rather than replaced whenever. They do not want to comment on the impact of replacement windows. The two things that concern us, the staff is the should not part. It doesn't say it doesn't, will not affect the national register. It says it should not with the air conditioning with the room. So, we need to get a direction from the board tonight on proceeding with the drawings. Anything you want to add, Don?
Well, from the last meeting, we were tasked to go ahead and find out if it would interfere with the historical registry. And if it didn't, we were to proceed on with getting the flat feed from the architect. Because of the should not and still, and it not being will not, we wanted to bring it back to you all for y'all's discussion before we proceed any further. Because should not is, is not a definite answer. Will not, would be a definite answer.
So, you received this March, or when did you receive this?
I received it, the 22nd, on the 22nd of March.
My motion, if you just go back and ask for definition, a definite answer, yes or no, let it know, okay, before we move forward.
Second. Discussion.
We sent that letter or Dr. Rice's phone call or email, whatever the call correspondence was, to the state, correct?
That is correct. The Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer.
But they're not completely in charge of this?
It's listed on the national register.
So, that's who we need to probably send the same request to bypass the state.
I think we've got the state's definition of what they interpret.
Right. I think we need to send that letter along with the original.
To the next level.
Yes.
The next level.
That's good.
Amending this motion.
That is my amendment.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion was for clarification before we move forward. Any other discussion? Even though you sent it, sent it as national. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, Bowie Park Forestry, the forestry management plan, we're proceeding with that. Waiting on Dwight Barnett to come out and meet with us to mark the trees that should be bid on to be removed, so that is our next step. Dwight had hoped to be out this week. We anticipate him being out by the first part of next week to be able to start marking those trees and meet with us so we can move forward with that project. Welcome signs, Gary is working on that to get that accomplished, hopefully in the next week, week and a half. He had a two-week lead time and now we're into the second week, so I have to turn that over to him to get it accomplished. Nothing further on the safer routes. We're still waiting, oh, I'm sorry, we're still waiting on the response from the state engineer, farm engineering firm on our environmentals on that. They have been completed. We just not have received anything as of yet. Active transportation moving forward with our paving projects, really the next three are all kind of going to be lumped together, we feel like, but number 11 for sure with the city paving. I don't know if you have this document in front of you, but our city paving, we are getting a list of roads to bring to you next meeting to prepare for a bid document to go out to pave for the next phase, which would be probably starting sometime in June, overlapping into July. Evergreen Park, Evergreen Park, we are going to be proceeding next week with ordering some picnic tables and getting some other things set up down there, clearing the area, putting some gravel in for parking so we can get that finalized. The Park Five Year Strategic Plan, obviously has been referred to the board, and I'm not sure if that's part of what the mayor's going to speak to shortly. We have gotten a transportation plan together. We did talk to William, Will Owen, our engineer, and he has asked that he be given at the next meeting to get some information and some cost estimates back to us, so that's where we are there. Don and I did meet with them. I did get an estimate on the farmer's market. It's about, I believe that cost was approximately somewhere in the $24,000 range. I don't know why I don't have that in front of me, but that's what's, memory serves me on that. We did get a cost estimate there, Commissioner, on a shelter. It's kind of a steel structure, if you will, to be more, and combination, 30 by 30 that was on the plan. I don't know if Don has anything to speak to about the city center overlay. I have prepared a city survey that we need to get some feedback from each one of you on, and I've sent that out to you. I can send it out again to let you look at it and see if we want to discuss it further or how we want to proceed there.
Can we get anything back from, I think it was requested last meeting to look into the grant writer, the possible grants, the leg bands for the handicap accessible?
I attempted to get over and I talked to her this week. The last, after meeting, she'd gone to South Africa and just got back first part of this week, so she's getting some things together on that and should be getting back in a few minutes.
I would like to ask about the streetlight project. Have anything on subdivisions or this, I guess I'll call it, planned need?
I was out of town for over a week, and so I made my ride around and looked and made some notes, and I just got to get with Don.
Okay. Just want to follow up there.
Mayor, also the trams, or the traffic, I believe it's about two more weeks and they'll start doing, putting the stations up. And of course, there's a 30-day, I think it's 30, it could be 45, that they have it on flash for everybody to get used to a new traffic signal. So, that, you should see some movement probably in, probably in about two weeks on, they've got the wiring under the road, they've got, they're ready to go to that next phase and just waiting for the delivery of those.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Item 7D, discuss and/or take actions on recommendations from the park board. We had a very active, very good meeting on the 1st of April, and in that, we talked through several pieces. Of course, just to bring to remembrance, we have a directive from the Board of Commissioners working and processing through the Tennessee Department of Forestry Report. City Manager Hyatt mentioned that they were working with the gentleman to do the tree markings, so we look forward to that moving along. The other was discussing other initiatives that the park board were, trying to read my notes, if there's anything specific, other than, it's a very, very good meeting. We've got some great, great people looking out for the benefit of not only Bowie Park, but looking out for the benefit of the park system and creating a, hopefully what you'd say is a 30,000-foot view, something of a big, big dream and a big opportunity. And they had several conversations as we worked through the park system of Evergreen Industrial Park, Elrod Property, Triangle Park, Bowie Nature Park, Bowie Nature Park At Parcel, and the parcel on 96th Highway. So, with that, all of the discussion takes place, and some of my comments this evening is educating because we will have an article coming out in the paper that will mention about the park system. And as we go into the new surveys, that will be important of understanding that Fairview does not just have one park. There are many parks in Fairview, and we look to benefit the citizens in the way that they desire to have their parks in their community. So, we're very blessed to have the multiple parks. Of course, that was gifted most of them from Evangeline Bowie, the Bowie family. But at this time, I'd like to kind of just wrap up my rambling and go into my recommendations. First recommendation is the park board makes a recommendation for approval by the Board of Commission to engage the city grant writer to explore grant options for the adopted forestry plan, park campgrounds, community gardens, handicap trails, and farmer's market. Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The second recommendation is the park board makes a recommendation for approval by the Board of Commissioners to explore campground or lodging plans for the Bowie At Parcel. I make a motion for approval. Second. All those in...
Is that the only, the only place they want to look into?
The Evergreen is not of size. Elrod is another option. Triangle School is the PUD. Bowie Nature Park is not allowed in the conservation easement, and the 96th parcel is too small on roadway. So, yes, ma'am. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third recommendation is the park board makes a recommendation for approval by the Board of Commission for the admin staff and the park staff to review the park's master plan and remove and/or delete any sections that refer or are no longer valid due to the post-conservation easement. Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you restate that?
Yeah, I would like that, too.
It was, it was what was discussed by Mark. He and Keith discussed it. You agreed fully.
Well, I just wanted to...
You then went to the motion. I'll bring it back to the thought. Park board makes recommendation for approval by the Board of Commission that the admin staff, park staff, review the park's master plan and remove and/or delete sections relating to anything post-conservation easement. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, discuss and/or take action on budget workshop. We did have a budget workshop from 6:00 to 7:00. Department staff and Board of Commissioners were all involved in discussing that we are currently in a 90-day completion, heading to our 90-day, actually 88-day completion of our current budget that we're in. We find it wise to review and to always stay on top of where the revenues are and where the expenses are. That's what we're here for, to make sure that all things are being addressed and that all things audited or exactly as the money is being spent. So, we are being wise or being prudent servants as we have been elected to be so, do so. We had a workshop for about an hour. The discussion went for Ms., the CFO, Ms. Crystal Puit, addressing what any of the hall questions were. The only recommendation that was put before was a recommendation, and I make a motion that the staff do, you gave me this RFP, recommendation for...
Proposal.
Proposal for auditing services. That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was there anything else that you'd like to add, City Manager Hyatt?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Business, discuss and/or take action on internal financial controls policy. Ms. Puit.
Thank you, Mayor. The financial controls policy was given to us by TML when they worked on some of our risk, the possible risk for the city. These are all controls that we actually already had in place, however, we didn't have it in writing. And they recommended that we, we have this policy that was also reviewed by our city attorney, Mr. Cantrell, and it just simply puts what Teresa, myself, and Delana do daily in writing, making sure that not one of us handles everything from start to finish, which gives you the controls needed.
With the approval.
Second. Discussion. Is the dark highlighted? Did you just say this? Is that the changes?
No, this is all new policy. And that was like...
Is that some of the dark highlight? Just a question.
This policy actually is exactly what TML suggested. They gave it to us as a suggestion. We filled in our titles. The dark pieces, I believe, to them are like the important pieces. Like, for instance, the deposit has to be made no longer than three business days after it was received. That is, that's a requirement under GAAP. So, I think they highlight, or they bolded what they felt was most important to catch your eye as you're looking at.
Okay, and because you brought that one out, the last paragraph on the first page, that addresses the police department, but it doesn't have the same sentence that addresses you or the finance department.
Well, the deposit is made by, well, me. I make the deposit. I prepare it. I put it in a locked bag, and then the police department has to take it to the bank.
Okay.
And only the bank has a key to unlock it.
So, that's why just the police department is responsible for making deposits for three days?
Correct. They're responsible, they're actually, we do it daily, but they come and pick up the locked bag because they have to carry it for safety precautions, carrying the money down to the bank.
You don't pay deposits ever?
No. The one time that I have was Thanksgiving, I believe it was, because we were going to be gone for the four-day weekend. That afternoon, Teresa and I went together with the locked bag, ran down to the bank so that that deposit did not stick here until Monday when we returned.
And understanding, I wouldn't ask in for specifics, but my general question to that is this does not hold anyone other than the police department to make a three-day deposit? Is the wording in this last paragraph needing to address anyone who makes a deposit?
Do you think so, ma'am? They're technically the only ones supposed to make, physically make it. They don't like prepare it.
But let's just say there was a concern.
Oh, yes.
This policy would not have any relevance on you making a deposit six days late. So, my question is, should that verbiage not say any and all deposits, not just police department?
Actually, if you have to make that deposit within the three days, and if you're, if anyone other than the police department about a policy is making that deposit, it's a violation of your policy. So, I wouldn't have anybody making it other than the police department. Or if you want to change the policy, but I don't think it'd be very safe. If you're going to do that, you would...
I'm adding to it, I'm not taking away.
Yeah, you could add to it, any, the police department or anyone making that deposit, but if you're going to do that, you need to add to it the provision that if anyone else makes that deposit, they be accompanied by a police officer for safety purposes. And the board could, if they desire, approve that policy subject to Puit making that change.
Do I have to do an amendment?
No.
To his approval of that, subject to?
Yes, you have an amendment on the, for you to withdraw your amendment, make a...
And we've got a motion to approve everything.
Right. You could, you could either withdraw your motion and make a new motion, or you could add, make an amendment to approve it, subject to making the changes that you suggested. And then vote on the motion, and then vote on the amendment, and then vote on the motion.
I agree that it's necessary. I mean, I, I understand what's the question, because now, the way it's worded with the police, but basically, if the only people, I mean, do we want anybody to be able to take it?
But if they do, they have no liability if they don't make it in three days. The wording doesn't say that. The wording doesn't say they're responsible.
Under GAAP, everybody is, has to, everybody, whoever makes the deposit in the city has to... city has to make it within three days, or we're in violation of GAAP, general accounting.
That's another policy?
Yeah, that's like, that's our, that's the accounting policy. That's what accounting, all accounting has to do with.
That's a state requirement. The only reason that you would want to make the changes you're talking about is if for some reason, somebody wanted to make that deposit, they should not make it without being accompanied by a police officer. That would be the reason for your change.
Which was a discussion after we went down and made the one deposit together that we should call the second shift.
I think, should I look at somebody from the finance department that is disappointed by city manager and a police officer?
Both?
Both. That way, you're direct contact from the accounting standpoint.
Well, once it leaves my hands, Theresa and I are the only two with a key to that locked bag.
I have it at the back, and this, it can be opened, I promise you. Not mistrusting anyone, but I think that would be a good procedure to have. That way, it stays in accounting's hands and doesn't put that burden on the police department, which is not their responsibility in the first place, but to escort you and move it.
Well, I, I saw a discussion about that. I don't know if we really, if it makes a lot, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but do we really want to require the city manager and, I mean, three people to go to the bank? I mean, never go down the hill.
For him to appoint a person, which if we did, one of these two, or himself, and a police department.
Okay, gotcha.
Any one of them would be fine.
So that last paragraph will be amended?
Did Stuart, did you withdraw your motion?
I withdrew my motion, so we can just start fresh.
My motion would be that that last paragraph of that policy to include anyone making deposit and city manager and/or his appointee be escorted by police department, which is responsible for, and then you can pick up the sentence, the second, and then the second And I'm not making it verbiage that it has to be exact wording, it just has to have the same intent, what we discussed. That's a motion.
Second.
Discussion? The only other discussion that I have is the, it doesn't have page numbers, but the second page. All persons using city of Fairview debit credit card shall be specifically authorized to do so by a resolution. We have a resolution?
I think Mr. Cantrell said we had to approve this, then he, the resolution would come second.
Correct.
That's correct. You approve that, and then I, then, because then I'll have the authority to draw the
Thank you.
And I'll probably put in the resolution the titles of the people who are going to be authorized, rather than the names, because people change more often than titles do.
And then it says credit card use policy. Who will be writing that policy? Do we currently have a policy?
It's part of this. It was, it's on the next page.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I read it, I promise. So that will be as written?
Uh-huh, yes, ma'am. And there's a page that all credit card users will have to sign stating that they read the policy and that they understand it, so that if they're in violation of it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item A B, discuss and/or take action on recommendation, re-recommendation, no recommendation, I read that one, from planning commission, Director of the Board, say.
I believe I have a copy of two ordinances passed down from the planning commission. The first one is ordinance to amend the municipal zoning ordinance three dash one oh five point one, minor home occupations. By adding number ten to that list of specific minor home, specific prohibited minor home occupations, which would put those home occupations as major home occupations. Number ten was added to read, or any home occupation in the opinion of the zoning administrator should be classified as a major home occupation. Planning Commission recommended unanimously that this be, that the zoning be amended to add that tenth item to that list.
This is in order?
For second.
For second, any discussion?
So this would everybody that's currently operating the maker or what would be considered is grandfathered in, is that?
This, this section right here is just to change that, and that section that, the following are specifically prohibited as minor home occupations, but may be permitted as major home occupations in accordance with the procedures of section three dash one oh five point two, accessory uses permitted with supplemental provisions. Then it gives a list, appliance repair, beauty salons and barber shops, cabinet makers, ceramics with kiln larger than six cubic square, six cubic feet, dancer, music studios with more than four students, medical dinner offices, transportation equipment repair, upholstery, veterinary uses including care, grooming, and boarding. Then the next section, ten, would be what would be added, or any other home occupation in the opinion of the zoning administrator should be classified as a major home occupation. So it's just classifying a minor home occupation or a major home occupation. It don't have anything to do with prior existing occupations. This is just for when somebody comes in to get a permit.
It was, it was simply to, if someone comes into something that's not in that list, you couldn't possibly, you heard that laundry list, you couldn't possibly include everything in there. Somebody's going to walk in one day and have something that's not in the list. It gives the zoning administrator the authority to say, okay, that's summer of this list, we can approve it or we cannot. If he doesn't approve it, then they take the normal appeals route.
But if you want to approve this ordinance that's before you, somebody would need to read that caption, and this would be the first reading of that bill.
So I just want to clarify this, but, so the planning commission still is working determination, they've just given us a classification, basically, of-
Well, there's two ordinances here, and we'll look to the next one that will address that.
I want to make sure I know which one.
Ordinance number eight oh three is an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview, Tennessee municipal zoning ordinance three dash one oh five point one, minor home occupations, section J, by adding subsection ten. Move to approve, second.
The motion we read, before we read, we go with it. It's okay, but can we go with the first one, or? Any ask for a recommendation? We did a motion and a second, then in discussion, we read the caption. Do we need to go for a new motion?
No, you have a motion. The only thing, if we consider that motion, you'd have to read the caption.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you. So with him making one, does he have to withdraw it?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I got another one.
Okay. The second recommendation is to amend table five dash one oh two A, and this is the section that's dealing with the major home occupations and minor home occupations as being permitted uses within the districts. The recommendation from the planning commission, if you'll look on your chart or the table that I provided for you, under major home occupation, you see under the AR fifteen A, AR five A, RS forty, RMS forty, R twenty, and the RS fifteen, there's a C there. Those Cs used to be all, all the way across the table there. The C means that a major home occupation is permitted only with a conditional use permit. Planning Commission, because of the setbacks on, on the higher-density residential zonings, RS five, RS eight, RMHP, which is a residential mobile home park, RM eight, RM twelve, and R, RM twenty are all high-density residential developments. They thought that it would be best to not allow any major home occupations in those zoning districts. So the table reflects that without anything being in those sections there, it means that it's not permitted by right or by a conditional use permit. And this recommendation was also unanimous from the planning commission.
Ordinance number eight oh two is an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview, Tennessee municipal zoning ordinance table five dash one oh two A, continued use of structures allowable within residential districts. Move for approval, second.
All those in favor? City manager, items for discussion. Some of these updates.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. One thing I do have, we, it has been a long time coming, but it's spring, and we hope we start having spring this week, this next week, in which we'll be people mowing grass, people trimming trees, people doing some things like that, clean up their yard, and just ask that, get you trims and trees, put the long end of the tree limb or what you trim toward the road, so our staff, it makes it a little easier, they'll get it. But it just makes it a little easier, they can, they feel more expedient, expedient in what they do. Also, if you hire, if citizens hire a contracted tree trimmer to trim their trees, we don't pick up, we don't clean up after contracted workers. That would create a lot of work for us. So just be mindful of that, you know, citizens need to be mindful of that. We do pick up quite a bit, and we will continue, but just to remind everybody that, you know, we're cutting grass and everybody else is, so we want to do as much as we can to keep the city healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, you have a copy of my report before you.
Mr. Michael.
Yes. Planning Department has reviewed final plot for Phase Two of Harton Reserve subdivision off of Kingston Springs Road, site plan for Tiger Imports to build a new building in the industrial park, and a grading plan to, for property that's located off of Fairview Boulevard to receive some of the souls from the Walmart project. They'll be at the planning commission's on the agenda for next week, and we will recommend approval for those. The building permit department issued five building permits for the month, month of March. The total construction cost for those permits was one hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, three hundred fifty-four dollars. We issued forty-three left-wing permits. The complaints department received two complaints. We forward those to the appropriate department for resolution. We filled in team calls for service-related orders, forward them to the property department for work to be completed. The building codes department made twenty-seven building inspections, issued two certificate occupancy. The codes violation department received eight complaints for the month of March. There were twenty-two violation letters sent out, two failures to comply sent out, and one citation written.
Thank you. I'll just ask about the scratch B and D fronts. Has that been relettered or revisited? Because they're not corrected at this time.
Letters went out, and we're still working on those. I actually got an email from one of those that received a letter. They have, let me know that they are working on it, and they will probably, as soon as the rain lets up, they'll get out there and start making that, that direction. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Quick question. I don't know if we brought this up before. I know I've discussed it with you. There's some treaders over on Lake Road, but there's one in particular, I think we already looked at once before, that the roof is now falling.
We have made steps to up our code enforcement on property maintenance. We have hired Greg Dewire in to help us out with code compliance. He is making some progress on, on a lot of the properties that we have out there that's in non-compliance. And he's, of course, he's still, we're still training him, getting him acclimated to, to this position, and he's, right now, he's doing a real good job for us. I feel like he'll improve, and that we'll proceed forward with the property maintenance on, on a better foot.
We've made some good improvements on the maintenance of our affairs, and just keep it going on the side streets. Exactly, we've got people that, they don't want to ride on the streets and keep the yards and the properties and have something like that prosper.
Thank you. Other staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. From the fire department, we had fifty-five calls last month. That's right on target with what they have in the past, after you take away the county calls. I want to speak briefly about the fires in the schools. Got a couple of phone calls, had one business parent concerned about the number, well, it isn't, but the three, the three fires we had. The first fire was in the high school, of course. That was a malfunction piece of electrical equipment, completely accidental. The sprinkler system did its job, put that fire out. The one at the middle school, two days later, was, was somewhat related in that a child thought, because they got the day off from the high school, that he would get the day off at the middle school. And I understand there might have been a willow switch in a backyard shed involved in some of that, but he was caught, and there was no damage to the middle school. And, yes, he got the day off. And then the fire at the middle school with the lightning strike, that was Mother Nature. It had nothing to do with the first two at all. And the principal called me about the, the way they handled it, they got struck by lightning. The maintenance people were already on the school property, sent them up to the roof to check, and did find a smoldering fire. He evacuated that wing of students and asked, when his conversation with me, could he do anything different? I said, pull the alarm, everybody's out of the building, and we'll find out how far that, that fire's gone. They opened the next day, they repaired it the same day, minor damage. So the, the three fires were, were kind of related, but only by the, the human nature. Otherwise, your schools are safe.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the police departments in the month of March made a total of sixty-two arrests, including six for DUI, three for domestic violence, opened eight drug cases involving arrests, issued two hundred fifty-four citations for the month. We worked eighteen accidents, sixteen of those being minor, and only two with injuries for the month. We had a total call for service of seven hundred and eleven for the month.
Park staff would like to say thank you to all the volunteers, the thirty-five that we had come up from all state. I thought I was going to have done it. Tomorrow night, we have a start party, starting at seven thirty to nine thirty. And also, we're accepting applications for summer camp. Thank you.
Mayor Kevin is not here tonight. He's home taking care of a newborn baby and wife, so he'll have his report next, next week, or within two weeks.
Any others? City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to have two things for the board tonight, basically just some information. I will timely file an answer to the court warrant suit that was filed on the annexation. The answer has to be filed by the nineteenth. We will have another meeting on the eighteenth. I will not wait till the, the last day to file, and it will be timely filed. The second thing is, a couple of months ago, the board instructed me to have available in April a ordinance to create a payment of assignment to the chairman of the various commissions and boards. I have prepared that ordinance. I will submit it to Ms. Theresa and have it distributed to you so that it will be available, not to be put necessarily on the next board meeting, but to be available to you for the budget hearings. You will find when you get it, I did put down the numbers that, that the board approved, but I've left those since it's going to be for you to see first in the budget hearings as blanks, so that during your discussions, you should decide to change it. Then all I got to do is, is stick in the new numbers, otherwise I will put in the numbers that you gave me, but I'll, I'll give that to Theresa tomorrow so that it can be distributed to you prior to any budget hearings that you might have. Thank you.
Question, if I could, Mayor?
Yes.
What kind of-
Comments?
Okay. What type, how long is the label we're looking at for the property for ordinance eight oh one?
I don't mean to be evasive, Mr. Commissioner, but it could, it depends on how far this thing goes, if it goes through the, if it goes to, to the court, uh, you know, you may be looking at sixty to ninety days, if, if, at the trial level, if it's, if it's handled there. Uh, you know, sixty must say sixty to a hundred and twenty days. If it gets into the Court of Appeals, uh, you could be looking at a year, year and a half, just depends on how fast they move.
So what, what would be the repercussions if we weren't able to prove this ordinance?
If you approve what ordinance, sir?
The, the final real bill, twenty thirteen dash oh six, ordinance eight oh one.
You're talking about the annexation? Well, it would be totally inappropriate, because, uh, you can't, uh, zone something that, that you, we approved the final, obviously approved the final, uh, uh, reading of the ordinance to annex the property, but the lawsuit that was filed is to contest the legality of that annexation. Uh, if you approve a, a zoning, uh, ordinance of, of property before this, uh, plays out, uh, you could not take any action on it, you'd have to approve it with the, with the proviso that, uh, no building permits or anything would issue until this litigation played out, because if you're successful, uh, if the city's successful, then you proceed on in the manner that you were, but you couldn't have any building permits or anything issued prior to it playing out, so you might as well prove it after this plays out. Uh, if you were not successful, then, then the property would not be in a part of the city, and you can't zone something that's not in the city.
My concern is, every time somebody wants to hold something up, they just file a lawsuit, it takes two years to get settled.
Well, it may take two years, but the thing, the, the thing that, that you do, if you approve the annexation before this plays out, you greatly complicate the lawsuit that's dropped a little bit, because then you come back and somebody has to ask for, uh, a really superstitious thing, that you will not do anything on this until this plays out. So it just, it just, it's just more stuff to have to deal with. And, and one other thing to, to clarify about, there's certain built-in time delays in these things that, in other words, if somebody files a, a, an appeal, then you've got, uh, forty-five days to file your answer to that appeal, and then they've got time to file their answer. Those things are, are built in, there's not anything anybody can do with those, uh, and then once it gets, once you argue this thing at the Court of Appeals, when all these documents gets filed, this thirty days is up, this forty-five days is up, it gets scheduled on the document from the Court of Appeals, and once you argue it, nobody has any control over when that, the panel's gonna issue its opinion. I've had them down there, they issued their opinion in three months. I had one down there that I thought they could issue probably within three weeks, and I got it back in about eight and a half months.
What would be the process for us to recover any lawsuit, labor fees, or monies?
Virtually nonexistent, because what it amounts to is, uh, you have to, to plead in your answer that the lawsuit that was filed was frivolous, had absolutely no basis in, in fact or in law, and if the court affirms that, then, uh, you can ask for your discretionary cost, but as a penalty, the courts and the rules of civil procedure discourages cash transfers from one party to another, uh, in, in that type of action. And they just usually do it, they'll, they'll direct you to do something like, give the other party an apology, or something like this. And, and, and that's in the rules of civil procedure, we were having trouble with that. You can't ask for, now, we can and will ask for the discretionary cost, that is the cost, uh, at, uh, the, it judges discretion, he can award you, and usually does award, the, the loser in the, in the, in the action usually ends up paying the court cost. Uh, and you can ask for discovery cost, if we have to take depositions and this type of stuff. Uh, you can ask for the attorney's fees, the judge usually won't award that, but, uh, those, they're called discretionary fees with good reason, it's a discretion of the judge as to whether they grant it or not. I have found that generally, you get part of what you want, you don't get everything. Uh, they'll give some to one side and some to the other, and that's the reason I call them, you know, discretionary costs, it's certain discretionary trials.
Item ten on the agenda is communication from the commissioners. Commissioner Missam?
Uh, I have nothing to add, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Kiel?
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Commissioner Seid?
Uh, the only thing I, was the, my bad thing, uh, there's the Special Olympics from the levels, uh, so volunteer for that, come on out and do that. I got a even a little minute on John Cheery, uh, I think everybody got one, I urge you to look it over, and John, remember, make sure that you have, had a good time the next meeting, if you just get here a little bit earlier.
Thanks, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
And the only thing I would like to say is, we have a video on demand, our recorded meetings back on track. Thank you to everyone who participated in, in taking care of that project, I believe it was just getting where the people were enjoying seeing it, so I want to encourage you to visit fairview-tn.org and look at the city TV tab, and be able to view any of the past meetings or tonight's current meetings, so hopefully that'll be a way for everyone to stay plugged in, because this is your city, and we wanna hear from you under comments, and we also want everyone to know what's going on, so we're all working together to make Fairview a great place. Motion for adjournment?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you for your attention.